Going with the golf?
Thank you.
Okay, there's a target slide domain. And then Kristen was there too. Gave an update on the highway. Morning Stacy.
Good morning Stacy.
Good morning.
Hey Jeff, we heard anything from Matt on the trade engineer thing?
Nah, I'll send an email and include you guys in it.
Another Matt?
Fourth of October works for me.
That's what that January on?
No, we're not on, we're not plugged in today.
Oh, hold on all this.
But we're on here, so that's good.
Camera's on, I didn't turn on the video screen because we don't have any presentations. April does that.
Okay.
Do you think I can turn this off?
You do, and it'll beep during the whole meeting.
There you go.
Plug it.
Sound like an Amber Alert during meetings.
I'm messing with stuff.
What are you saying your kids are gonna have?
I, I'm usually silent, I think, I just observe.
Dave, you didn't sign these, did you?
I have not.
You're welcome. Larry, can I throw your paper away? Oh, no, it's full.
Oh.
Yeah, you're just saving a spot there.
Just remind me when I leave to take it.
Okay.
It's the oven.
I just don't want you to trip over it.
I need to read it.
Yes, it's very good reading. Keep you up at night.
Well, that'd be a pretty good sign up for the car show. Have yous?
I haven't, I think they just show up. There's usually quite a few there.
Yeah.
I think there was a bunch from known by Sands, don't that came up last year?
What time does it start? Eleven, if? Well, you ain't much else to do, are you?
Not really.
Look at him, he totally fit that, he's like, yeah, sure, whatever.
I'm here to answer.
It's in your area to go somewhere.
County questions, not car show questions.
Way to go buddy.
He took off his grand portage hat and he's now Commissioner Deshaun.
Good morning. I'll call the regular meeting of the Cook County Board of Commissioners to order, where our mission is supporting community through quality public service. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any adjustments to the agenda?
I'm sure the only thing I would add is that we have Michael Keporth today. He has our new emergency management director and it'd be nice to have everybody acknowledge him. I think everybody knows him.
Welcome, Michael.
Thank you.
Brady, any adjustments to the agenda?
Oh ma'am.
Okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we open up our conversation for a public comment. You can address the county with any matter or concern. When invited, please step up to the table there, there'll be a sign-in sheet. Put in your name and address. Members of the public can respectfully speak up to five minutes. And the public comment is limited to thirty minutes, depending upon how many people we have here, of course. The county board may ask a question, but the issues are not debated during the public comment period. At the board's discretion, the board may agree to schedule matters to be addressed later. And all discussions should be respectful in nature and must be directed to the board and not to other members of the public. So, would you please step forward?
Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Codwell, Ms. Hawkins. My name is Greg Galen and I'm a resident and property owner here in Cook County. And I want to first thank each one of you for working hard at county government and for doing your best to make this county an amazing place to live. Thanks for pitching in for democracy, much appreciated. And for the most part, I came out this morning to ask you to please bring the proposed border-to-border route question before the county board. And I would also ask you to then vote against this project. The border-to-border route promotion would expose Cook County taxpayers to the threat of higher taxes by way of the need for increased road maintenance, while also conflicting with the best use of our county resources, which is tourism and low-impact recreation. A particular concern would be the low sum of only $200,000 set aside to offset extra costs of maintenance and repairs due to border-to-border traffic over the entire 850-plus mile route. Multiple entities could be expected to be competing with our county for these meager funds so as to also fund maintenance on their roads. And, before we here in Cook County can access those funds, there is a requirement of us needing to prove that at least 50% of any additional maintenance and repairs due to wear caused by border-to-border route traffic. Necessarily, this would, knowing how things work, I'm sure that this requirement alone would cost us money. Necessarily, this would be an additional task to perform for at least one paid county employee before we can even have a chance to be approved reimbursement. If we spend the time and money only to find out that we come in at 45% wear and tear instead of the 50% that were required to show, we would be turned down for all of the needed funding. And the costs would necessarily be borne by the county taxpayer. Of course, we might also encounter the opposite problem of much heavier use than anyone has anticipated. In that way, we risk a quick depletion of the 200K fund and await for legislators to vote for more funding. As I understand it, that's a process that would only occur once every two years. And, there's no guarantee that more funds would be reimbursed to us from general revenue, legacy funds, or any other source. Unanticipated extra expenses do happen. But at this time, we need to carefully limit our exposure to the possibility of cost overruns. I have to say that I use the YMCA and I know that one way or another, we will spend a certain amount of money to do things like upgrade the Pike Lake Road and funding the Y. And, I'm not here today to take a shot at anyone about the costs and controversies of various other county projects. But I can tell you, someone who has been doing a lot of phone canvassing and walking the neighborhoods, meeting people and listening to people here and talking about the issues, there's just not a lot of stomach out there right now for any kind of extra costs that would be borne by the taxpayer. So, that's why I'd really like to see you vote this down before it bites us. At this time, and especially at this time, we don't need to unnecessarily add to our residents' tax liability and our county's fiscal uncertainties. Border-to-border, as proposed, is basically a promotion plus however many signs someone would string along the way. The roads are already there and you are free to drive those roads right now. Every vehicle that could use roads on this proposed border-to-border route can already use them. But the taxpayers of Cook County should not have to gamble over funding for this promotion. This is a poor time to introduce unnecessary risks to the people in Cook County who are dealing with higher property tax stress. People come to Cook County looking for something that they don't find anywhere else. The best, the very best use of our, of our natural and recreational resources here in Cook County already comport well with what we already have. And the key to the best use of these resources is in knowing the great value of what we already have and in not diminishing the things that make this a distinct and unusual destination for people worldwide. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull anything? Motion to approve then?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, Bob Thompson, the assessor, has something to tell us, advise us, inform us.
I'll take out one for everyone if you guys.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Chair and the board, just giving an update from the assessor's office. We have two kind of major issues going on right now in the county, in the assessor's office. The first one is the short-term rental, vacation rental classification issue. This is something that was kind of addressed by the previous assessor, Todd. He changed the classification on most of them from seasonal rec to residential non-homestead. In May of this year, the Department of Revenue issued a memo to all county assessors and city assessors statewide, essentially saying they would like to see if they're primarily used as a short-term rental, a commercial classification, that that would be appropriate. So, that's, it's gonna have some pretty significant impact if, you know, we're gonna have to send out a questionnaire, which is an expense we never had to incur before, looking for data to, you know, support what the primary use is. It's very possible that these things could be used personally and as short-term rentals. And, you know, if the personal use exceeds the short-term rental use, they won't change. They'll, they'll be a cabin or a residential non-homestead. If they're only used as rentals or primarily used as rentals, right now the direction is to go commercial on those. I anticipate there will be some pushback, potential tax court filings. You know, it could have significant impact on our economy, some local businesses, and certainly the residents. So, that's something we're still kind of sorting out. It's kind of a mixed bag of emotions across the state. Some counties, you know, they only deal with a few of them and they see them as a commercial operation. They totally agree, they, they plan on making that change without any, you know, I guess, conflict. But, other counties are looking at it and saying, you know, this is, this is crossing, you know, stepping over the, the line, maybe a little bit premature and that maybe we don't have everything and we need to support commercial classifications. So, it's definitely creating a, an interesting situation. In the second paragraph, it shows there's $190 million of real estate used or advertised as short-term rental properties, which is a significant portion, that's 10% of our county total. Resort units like Bluefin Bay and Caribou Highlands, for, you know, twenty years or so, they've been classified as seasonal recreational cabins. And, now the direction is that those would go to a commercial class. So, you know, we have 900 unit owners strong that are certainly gonna feel the impacts and they're, they're not going to agree with this sudden change, given that there hasn't been any legislative direction or change. So, that's kind of something that's still developing. I know, like I say, right now the directive is, is if it's primarily used commercial or seasonal rec then it, or rental, then it's a, a commercial class. And then on the backside, just a, a quick update on the type Latinx Pilt payment. It's supposed, the, the 2018 valuation is supposed to be finalized by the Secretary of Agriculture in the coming months. They have to do that to finalize the budgets. There's a meeting scheduled for Thursday morning. It's gonna involve the appraiser, William Stagerwalt, the review appraiser, the deputy forest supervisor, Steve Coonan, and myself and county attorney Molly. So basically, we're gonna be discussing, there's two major issues that we have. One of them being, how much land is there in the Boundary Waters? And the second issue is what is the, the value of the land per acre? The first issue seems to be, you know, less debatable, that's a factual, you know, that shouldn't be, there shouldn't be a big dispute between our figures and their figures and how much land there is. The second one is more opinionated, you know, an appraiser develops his opinion of value and another appraiser would likely never get that same result. It could be significantly different, it could be somewhat close. But that's, that's an opinion of value based off of market research and analyzing that data. So, hopefully, you know, we'll get some kind of response or reaction after this meeting, you know, relatively quick. It's, it's not, you know, it's unfortunate that we're kind of in the dark about what's gonna happen with that Pilt payment and the, the significance of the decline. But, I know just in looking at the acreage calculation alone, we ran a, a little bit of a rough estimate. Just the difference in acreage from what the county's calculating and what they're calculating, if we used their rate per acre of $705 or whatever it was, that would be about $150,000 difference in the Pilt payment every year. So, significant. And then, then that's just factual data that we're disputing. That's not something that's opinionated, so. Those are basically my two updates and like I say, on either one of these, if I get any kind of new direction or, or updated information, I can update the board as soon as I get that. So, if you guys have any questions for me.
Yes, Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, um, thanks Bob for the update. So, my memory is that in May it was a memo, right?
Correct.
Has that changed now to a directive?
It's, it's still a memo, but it's been perceived as like a directive. You know, that's kind of how the Department of Revenue always is issuing their, their directives, is through a memo. So, you know, we've had them in the past on agricultural lands, we've had them on residential lands. In fact, right when I came here in 2016, they, they issued a memo on residential non-homesteads. So if you, if you have a, a house and then your garage has a livable unit and you're homesteading in the house, you have to have a split class, you can't homestead two livable units. So, you know, you have homestead and then residential non-homestead. That was a directive that came out as a memo. And, that's how all assessors apply it statewide now. So, you know, like I say, this is something that we talked about at my legislative and executive board meetings from our Association of Assessing Officers. And, there was mixed, you know, Region 1, so we, we break it out in nine regions. Region 1 came out and flat-out said that as a region, they don't feel they're commercial. They think that a house is a house and it's residential. Not all the regions gave that clear of an opinion. And, you know, like I say, even within our region, we have some assessors that say, oh yeah, these should have been commercial for, forever. And we have some assessors that say, this is gonna, we're gonna wind up in tax court because of this, this is premature. So, you know, like I say, it's, my recommendation, I talked directly to John Klockseim, he's the Property Tax Division Lead at the Department of Revenue. And I told him, I said, I think we need to just back off and not make any changes until the legislator sorts it out. And, you know, whether they determine that it's commercial or something else, I think that would be a wise choice. Cause I, I fear we're gonna end up with a couple hundred tax court cases and I don't know, you know, how you even proceed if that happens.
And how, so what was his response then?
His response, you know, they're always asking you for, you know, why you think that. But, as an assessor, we're kind of just supposed to do what we're told. You know, if, if, they have a Property Tax Administrator's Manual. And if you're not following that, then you're, you're just really not doing the job. So it's kind of an ethical or a licensure, you know, violation if you, if you deviate from, cause that's how they're trying to create uniform across the state. And that's kind of where this issue came up. There are some counties that have been classifying commercially since the late 2000s. So, you know, it's just, it wasn't uniform. Like I say, Cook County is affected significantly, probably one of the top five states or counties in the state that is gonna be affected by this. You know, McLeod County, where they had a, a tax court case, there is case law. That, that was in 2012, they don't have a single vacation rental the last time I looked, in McLeod County. So, we have, you know, roughly 320 cabins. And then if you include all those resort units, that's another 300 and some. So we're over 600 that would fall into this change.
Well, so, I see a problem if the assessor's guidebook deviates from the law.
Yeah, and I don't know that it necessarily does, it's just, you know, there's real, no, no real definition on what is commercial. It's always just assumed if you're running and operating a business. There was some, you know, previous questions to the Department of Revenue on different operations, like maple syrup operations, you know, seasonal businesses that operate on the roadside and stuff like that. And they, they say at what level is something commercial? And, in those previous responses, they said signage, directing traffic in, a posted hours of operation, you know, website, an employee, cash register, those are a lot of the things that, that escalate it to a commercial use. There's been a lot of discussion in our groups about what's the difference between a hotel and a vacation rental? And those are a lot of the differences, it's the signage, the hours, the employees, the services that you get there. And what's the difference between a long-term rental and a short-term rental? The main difference is a shorter lease, but there is sales tax collected on short-term rentals, which there's not on long-term. So, it kind of falls right in this middle ground where, you know, it's, they're saying it's not residential. They're, they're making it clear that they're not residential non-homesteads. But what other classification is up to the assessor to determine, so.
Well, where I was going, I guess, or asking about that difference between the guidebook and, like you say, the legislature catching up, is if it does go to tax court, that puts the county, I think, at risk. Because, if we're defending the guidebook, but then the plaintiff is using the legislature, I mean, what, what trumps there?
And this, like I say, it was, it was tested in tax court once, but I even heard the Hennepin County Assessor, when, when they brought up the, the tax court and the case law that exists, he said, you know, that's a prima facie case, so unless you bring significant evidence to prove otherwise, then the, the assessor's determination stands. And that's basically how that case was decided, they didn't, they did bring some, you know, they brought their calendars and said, you know, we used it this many days personally, we used it this many days for rental. And, I think in their calculation, they were including advertised days and not specifically rented days, which, it kind of sounds like the Department of Revenue has backed off of the advertised days number and now they're talking actual rented days. So, you know, like I say, there's, there's definitely questions being raised by assessors throughout the state that the Department of Revenue's heard it. They, they're, they're well aware that, you know, some people are, assessors specifically are worried about tax court implications. And, one case doesn't, you know, doesn't always set precedence and another case could have a different outcome.
So, can you, can you talk about kind of the consequences of, or potential consequences of not following the memo?
Well, essentially, the Department of Revenue actually does post, you know, if they go after an assessor for violating their, you know, breaking the rules or breaking the law, you know, if you go out and value your own house and you put it down to $1 or something, they, they can come after you. They go to the State Board of Assessors and they, they censure your license. So, you know, I'm not sure, I, I guess, you know, right now the memo says residential non-homestead is not the classification for this. And that's what, you know, our $190 million of value is currently sitting on. So, you have to look at it and is it, is it used, is there a cabin more? Is it a season, is it a recreational property or is it commercial? I mean.
Will whole family history play into that as well?
I'm not sure.
Current use, yeah. I, I just see, I just see the county being at risk either way.
That's right, and you know, like I, I was saying, if, if we ended up, let's say we changed half of them. You know, if we determined half of them were commercial and we changed them and we got a tax court case on every one of those, I think at, at some point we would have to look at, okay, this, we, we can't support this anymore, we can't, we can't follow through with this. And when I asked the Department of Revenue about that, they said, they, they don't provide relief to your county ass, or your county attorney. They said that you, you know, if you get 100 tax court cases, you gotta deal with them. The board, the, the Board of Commissioners, I, I actually was asked the question, what authority do they have over the decision I make on these classifications? And essentially, they don't have any authority over that. The, the Board of Commissioners at the local board or the County Board of Appeals, they can make changes if they can establish that the, the obsessor was incorrect in his, in his determinations. However, you know, hypothetical, let's say you changed one to a different class from commercial, the state can look at that and change it to how they feel is appropriate. So, you know, it's, there is a little bit of authority with the board in, at the local board, or the County Board of Appeals, but the state does then, they look at it after that.
One final thing, and I see others I'd like to speak to, is I would just hope you could weigh the risks and choose the lesser risk.
Yeah, you know, so, there was a questionnaire made by one of the regions and they kind of sent it out statewide as like, uh, this is, this is our questionnaire, if anybody wants to use it, here it is. They ask a lot of questions and, and really what it boils down to is you only need to know two or three numbers. One trend I've been seeing, actually in the last couple of weeks, I've seen three vacation rentals advertised as a winter long-term rental. So, if they end up being rented six months long-term, that's the primary use. So that's a trend I'm starting to see in some of the properties where it makes sense. If you get a, a $700,000 house, could you, can you really rent that thing out for six months of the winter? I mean, is there somebody who can afford that up here? Well, when you factor in a, a potential increase in tax of $10,000 and apply that to six months rent, you probably could. You know, that way you could rent it six months, still rent it short-term for 150 days and, and have your income-producing cabin. So, you know, there's a, there's a, a whole bunch of different variables. One of the things that I actually pointed out and, and the Department of Revenue says, this is not my, this isn't part of my job to, to look at these comparisons, but it's been brought to my attention by a number of people. There's a, there's a property in town here, there's three rentals on it. They sit, you know, three on one lot. That's actually technically a seasonal resort in Grand Ray. So that wouldn't go to the commercial threshold, unless they were rented over 250 days each. So he could rent 750 days on one parcel without hitting commercial. And, the guy right across the street with one, if he, you know, he could rent it for 30 days and end up commercial. So, it's, it's that disparity right there, you know. If I can't go to commercial on this because of some special program, then how can I look at something with less business, less units, you know, less operations going on as commercial? So, you know, I've pointed all these things out and the, the directive, the memo still stands.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gershon?
Just a point of clarification for myself and maybe others. It seems to me that, and this is a question, if we send out the questionnaires and that goes to this state revenue, Department of Revenue, then those results, it, it seems to be implicit in this that those results will sort of produce the model. Is that correct?
So the questionnaire actually wouldn't go to the state. The questionnaire would just basically be sent out by my office and it would say, asking for two to three, actually now we're adding in this long-term, potential long-term rental aspect into it. But, initially like the one that Region 3 made, it says, how many days did you rent it? Well, how many nights did you rent it? And how many nights did you stay and use it personally or your family, you or your family? So, you know, you're gonna get a lot of responses, I think, where they used it 50 days and they rented it 40, you know? So, that was, that's the questionnaire, it comes back to our office and then we look at that data and say, what's the primary use? That's, that's pretty much how that questionnaire's supposed to work, the state wouldn't get those. So, you know, and I've asked them, you know, why aren't you setting a threshold on the number of nights rented, you know, rather than saying primary use? Because you could end up 30 days is commercial and you could end up where 80 days of rental is not commercial. And now, I mean, you have this, this disparity between the two. And I, I feel it'd be better to say, okay, if you rented it 180 days or more, now you're commercial. Cause that to me is more similar to the seasonal resort questionnaire. But that's, that's not something that they're willing to consider at this point. So, primary use is based off of what it's used the most for.
Next question then, so, it all comes back to the county again by the design of that survey, that you're gonna interpret the results and make a decision. that you're going to interpret the results and make a decision and then be liable and.
Yeah, and I know I read in one of the, it was somewhere over on the Iron Range, at one of the newspapers, the assessor made a statement, and they said that, you know, we're going to send out a questionnaire, and if we don't get a response, it's going to default to commercial. And I think that's kind of how most operations run. If, if we send out a seasonal resort questionnaire and we don't get a response, it goes to commercial. So there's a lot of similarities to the seasonal resort. It's just there's a three-unit minimum for a seasonal resort. If you have a lockout, you know, there's some units in Bluefin where they have three doors to one parcel, and they can rent them separately, or at the Heritage on, on the Ski Hill. Those classified would qualify as a seasonal resort, and then a one-unit wouldn't. And the resorts are actually the most, probably the most sensitive subject, because they're all going to be primarily used as short-term rental. And for 20 years, they've been taxed at a third of what they might go to. So, you know, those are the, the big organizations, the homeowners associations, the, the resort owners. They really need to start being vocal about their, you know, their stance on this.
Oh, yeah. Anything else, Larry?
No, I guess, I, I've just, this risk factor, I'm not clear on it. So if the Department of Revenue sets this criteria, then it seems to me that they would be the ones that would have to carry it forward into tax court. I know that that happened, you know, with the big, big shop. A lot of the counties west of us have had lost, like the Walmarts or the.
Dark store.
Yeah, the dark store stuff. The counties are always defending those. The only, the state assess stuff, the state does, if it goes to tax court, they go in and defend that. But if it's assessed locally, then it's up to the assessor to defend that. You know, like I say, right now, the basis is there's, there's one case law that, that says commercial, that supports commercial. There's the memo. But other than that, you know, like you say, the statutes haven't changed. Nothing has changed as, as far as the statutes go. So, you know, when you, when you really look at, and if, you know, lawyers are always technical, when you read the statute for residential non-homestead, it says residential non-homestead, one to three units. And the Department of Revenue Tax Administrator's Manual just goes a little bit further, and it says this is typically someone's primary residence or a vacant structure used for nothing. So the Department of Revenue's Property Tax Administrator Manual expands on the definition a little bit. Whether or not that was the intent of the legislator, that's to be debated. If you look at the four-plus units, which is an apartment classification, in that statute, it specifically says these leases must be longer than 30 days. Otherwise, you would default to like a hotel apart, it wouldn't be a apartment, it'd be a hotel. So definitely interesting, a lot moving, a lot going on there. And like I said, there's mixed feelings about it across the state from assessors. I've joined the legislative committee so that we have a voice at that level. I think that if the board takes a, a position that this does not, this is hurting our county or our economy and, and property taxpayers, that we can take a position and, and testify at the legislature at the next session. So that's kind of the, the purpose of the update here, because it appears we're going to go down the road, you know, the memo guides us down this road. But, you know, where everything ends up, because this is going to play out over a year or two. I mean, something might change at the next session, or it could end up being two years down the road, a tax court sets precedence, you know, so this, it's not like it's just a flick of the switch and this is over.
Commissioner Duker?
So is the Department of Revenue present during the appeal?
The appeals of the, the tax court appeals? I don't believe so. No, I think it's just three tax court judges.
Okay. So you've got a property where the homeowner's living in it so many days, and it's a vacation rental so many days. Are they then able to apply for Ma and Pa?
Well, Ma and Pa is a specific resort class, and you have to either have a DNR trail or a Lakeshore. But for seasonal resort, which doesn't.
And they're not resort, they're just commercial.
But Ma and Pa still has the minimum unit requirement, so.
Right, and the recreational requirement.
Yeah. There's, there's a lot of different caveats to those seasonal resorts, but I can say one thing for sure, is this one in town is a seasonal resort. I even have a slide from the Department of Revenue from 2014 that they taught at a class, and they showed a picture of that property and said that that's a seasonal resort. So, you know, it, it's, there's no question that that's a seasonal resort.
Right.
But right across the street, if you had, you know, one unit or two units sitting there, that's not.
Okay. And then Molly, would MCIT, would they ever help us out with the appeals court, or that's all on us?
As far as I know, MCIT doesn't represent counties in tax court.
Okay.
I know everybody has plenty to do, but would it behoove us to sue the Department of Revenue?
I mean. I don't know if you can or not. I mean, I guess.
The county attorney laughed. He, he made her do an expression she doesn't normally do during a meeting.
I mean, instead of waiting for things to come to us to be like, hey, this is.
I don't know, I have no idea what that would entail.
We force them to change it from a memo to a final determination?
Like a directive.
You know, the memo basically states primary use. I, I have a couple of comments just in reaction to what Commissioner Mills said, and then I want to add something to what Mr. Thompson said. So Commissioner Mills is correct that the law, the case law, the statute is what the precedent is, not the guidance of the Department of Revenue if, if our decisions are, are challenged in tax court. The, what I see as one of the greatest impacts here of the guidance of Department of Revenue is we're going to need to put a lot of more resources through the assessor's office into investigating the primary use of each property. That is a factual inquiry, right? And so we're going to rely really heavily on the answers from these questionnaires. The kinds of questions that we pose are really important. And I'd like to take a look at the questionnaire and make it very clear to property owners that it's important that they answer these and that they answer truthfully, so that we know that we can rely upon that information. If the default is going to go to commercial class, we, and that's then contested, we still have to prove the primary use is commercial, whether we have questionnaire answers or not. So that's a concern of mine. I also would like the assessor's office to consider partnering in some way with Land Services, because Land Services has now hired a contractor to make inquiries regarding short-term rentals. And I think that there could be a partnership there and some saving of resources in kind of investigating what the use is of each of these properties. So I think that might be a good idea. As, as far as the potential of a lawsuit, I think it would, a lawsuit against Department of Revenue, we need to prove a, a harm, and we're not sure what the impact of this guidance is going to be at this point. And it is still a guidance and not a directive, in that in some way protects the Department of Revenue, if you think about it.
It protects us also.
It protects us also.
Yeah, because we go by the statute.
That's why I was thinking weighing risks, you know.
Yeah, and we are definitely weighing risks, and Bob and I have had several conversations about this. That's exactly the kind of analysis we need to make.
See, I can tell you right now, I'm on a probationary two-year appointment. So basically, if they don't like something I did, then I'm, you know, they're not going to appoint me, reappoint me. So, you know, you did, you asked me that question, is what are the potential consequences? Well, I could be looking for a new job, and I might not even have a license if I make the wrong choice. I think I have to make somewhat of an effort to identify, you know, I, I flat out told the Department of Revenue, you know, I know of 10 or 15 that they don't get used for anything but vacation rental. Those ones, I can make the switch and, and be confident that if it went to tax court, that I can prove that these things are only used as vacation rental, you know, purchased by an LLC. You know, they own five, six of them. It's not their cabin. It's, it's a rental property. And that, those ones, I feel like you could defend. I think you could have a, a pretty good shot at defending those based on the existing case law. But I don't know that just doing those 10 or 15 is going to satisfy the Department of Revenue's memo of identifying the primary use of every property. And one of the things is, you know, people are going to look at this as, as the county is saying, if you, you know, don't rent them out. You, you have the option of not renting it anymore. And that, I don't want to give that message, you know, to say, well, you can save all this tax dollars if you just stop renting it. That doesn't, I, I don't want to go that direction. So, you know, it's, it's tough. I've had a lot of conversations with some of the, you know, concerned people with this, you know, the vacation rental managers and, and businesses that operate. They have tons of employees. They even have housing for their employees. And it certainly could affect their businesses. That's not something that goes into the consideration of primary use. As of right now, the, the memo says make an effort to identify primary use, and if it's short-term rental, then it's commercial. And like I said, this could play out over two years before it really even hits somebody's tax bill. This change would be looking at the 2020 assessment for taxes in 2021.
So looking at next step, sir, where do we go from here? Because what I understand is that you will make some analysis of this survey, and then based upon that, you're going to come to some kind of, you know, suggestions or, or your conclusions, because that's your responsibility. At that time, could you come back to the board and say, this is the way we're going to proceed? And I think our authority would be to maybe have a resolution that you can carry forward to the legislature.
Yeah, and those, well, so those surveys are going to be on a case-by-case basis. I mean, there's going to be over 600 of them individual. Every property needs to be looked at individually. And I, I mean, I can certainly come back once we've done that and say, you know, this many fell into the commercial, this many are, are just cabins. So, I mean, I can certainly give you a report on that, those numbers. And then, like I say, I think as far as moving forward, I mean, I have to do my job in my position of, of this whole memo. But the board can certainly take a position that I can bring to our association, to the legislative committee, and potentially testify down at the legislature on it. You know, this, this has happened with many different classifications. I think the whole seasonal resort started with East Bay Suites. So, you know, they, they got that special seasonal resort classification before they sold off. A, a lot of different classifications are made by these hardships, you know. When, when a hardship all of a sudden comes along down the road unexpectedly, there's, you know, legislative action typically. Storage, condominium storage units, they're not rented out. They're, you own them. That became an issue a couple of years back down in the cities where one county said they're commercial, another county was doing them residential. You know, somebody brought it to the legislator, and they actually, during a special session, created their own classification for those storage condominium units. I mean, something very similar could easily happen here.
So you're going to be sending out and working with Molly on the questions?
Yeah.
And they'll go to all Lucin Resort, Bluefins, everybody?
Yep, everyone who's, who's renting short-term that we've identified. You know, like I say, the number's like 640 with the resorts included. The resorts are, are a little more cut and dry, because I know a lot of them, you know, they're rented year-round. Some of these cabins, they shut down for the winter, you know, so you, you also have to look at all those aspects. And Cook County is going to be very unique, where we'll have everything from, it was rented for five days to it was rented for 310 days, you know? I mean, we're going to have everything in between with the numbers we have.
And, and your resources, your resources are limited, and so how, how do you weigh, you know, completing the quintile and, and doing this now as well?
Well, you know, like Molly said, potentially teaming up with Land Services to try and get some of this information, you know, on the, on the permit that is going to be implemented for 2020. Other, other than that, it would literally be a questionnaire that we would stuff and, and seal every single envelope. We'd pay for the mailing and hope we got a response. That would, that would be the process. So the resources weighed against the quintile, I mean, it's something that we could probably stuff 300 or 600 envelopes in, in less than a week. I mean, it's, but then, you know, you also have to, to take in these questionnaires. You have to put that data into some type of a spreadsheet, and you have to track and keep, you know, so.
That's for the work.
Definitely going to be some resources expended on it.
Okay, Commissioner Duker?
So I've been talking about this issue with legislators for years, and it's interesting that you say they made a special class for condominiums in the metro? Because the answer that I've received from our legislators for the past six years is, we don't make special legislation just for Cook County. So thanks for that little bit of information that I can carry in my back pocket when I have a conversation.
I'm almost certain that it was, it was an appeal to tax court for, I think it was East Bay, and that's what created the seasonal resort class.
Right, and then the condominiums. So legislators do make special situations when needed.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And I would just respond to Commissioner Duker's comment there that we are not the only county that are, that is impacted by this. And, you know, commissioners might be well advised to start reaching out to commissioners from other, what are the other major counties? Crow Wing?
Crow Wing has a bunch of them. St. Louis County has a bunch of them. Lake County, I'm not really sure how many they have.
Not as many. They're waiting for us.
When you start looking at the resorts, that's where it really starts adding up. I mean, I'm going to, at the end of the month here, I'm going to a, a fall conference for our association, and I think 130 of the units there are privately owned.
And when I've talked to other counties, they're like, well, we'll wait and see what happens when you do it. Is kind of the response.
And what we do, though, will impact them also.
They're aware of that, and they're supportive of the work that we're doing. They're glad we're doing it, and they ask for Bob to do presentations and, you know, work with our staff. But, yeah, I mean, like the questions that Commissioner Mills have asked, it's, it's a tightrope. It's not an easy thing, and it's, you can't just, okay, we're going to do this.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at the resorts, that's where it's kind of shocking. It kind of is jaw-dropping that for, you know, somebody might have owned this thing for 30 years, and they're paying this real low, you know, seasonal tax rate that the, the Cabin Owners Association lobbied for so that they didn't have to pay into referenda and voter referenda that could change their tax bill every year. They wanted something more predictable and more consistent. And now, all of a sudden, after owning it for 30 years, their taxes are tripling off of a memo and not legislative action. That's where, I mean, I've, I've taken many phone calls. At this point, I don't think people are even bothering anymore, because they're getting the same response every, you know, no matter who calls, it's the same response. But this is, the, the discussion needs to occur outside of the local assessor's offices. This is now at the legislative Department of Revenue, those levels.
Yep. We have the conversation in general committee, so we'll have the conversation this week again.
It might, and it might be worth teaming up with Crow Wing County and.
Yeah, and I, like I said, I don't know what counties have really taken a position. I know, I know a couple of counties that have said yes, and a couple of counties that have said no. But, I mean, I haven't like generated a list or, or started taking surveys.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Yep.
Okay. Brady, do you have something for us?
I don't have anything particular. How about generally?
A mysterious check for $725,000 in appear?
Nope. Okay, well then we'll move on to administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a couple of personnel requests. One is after the vacancy of Sean Swearingen in the Maintenance III position, we advertised internally to fill that position. And there were two candidates, both were interviewed, and the recommendation is that Dan Burgland be promoted into that Maintenance III position. And that we post a vacancy for the position he's leaving as a maintenance worker, too.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Motion to approve?
Support.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you. And the second item is, is to approve the resignation of Cheyenne McIntee and approve the posting for a custodial position. We just filled this position and. We just filled this position and during her probationary period, she turned in a notice. It wasn't what she thought it was going to be. What I will tell you is, is that Brian and Pamela and I are working on a plan of reorganizing the second shift custodians so that we can have a little more consistency with this position. It's very difficult for Brian to supervise staff who are working a different time than he is working. So, we're looking at our options on how we would organize that position. But we, we still need to, we still need to accept the resignation effective September 19th and make a motion or, and approve the posting of that vacancy. But that vacancy will probably look a little different than it has. It'll still be a full-time evening shift. But we're talking about the possibility of, of creating a team in the second shift and doing some team cleaning of all the buildings in the evenings so that there's more security, there's less risk, and there's more accountability within the groups. So, I would give you that context to say, we recognize that this has been a recurring problem. And we need, we need for it to be organized in a way that's easier and for Brian to supervise.
Motion to approve?
Support.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to just make one comment to, want to thank you for looking at things, you know, different kind of scenarios of what can make that work better. Because it's been a lot of turnover and for a lot of different reasons and not to blame or anything. It's just, it's been a concern for some time at the Y and I serve as the rep to that. So, I constantly hear about it. So, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on to Commissioner reports? Anything to report there?
I'll, I'll start.
Okay.
Okay. I'm handing out, at our last N-Club meeting last Thursday, we had a presentation on the school trust fund and all the land. So, I'd just like to pass these out. It's just sort of a little summary. And if you have, want to take more than one, go right ahead. It just gives us a summary. And I think one of the things that I learned was, you know, this amounts to a per pupil payment to our, our schools. Each per pupil unit receives different amounts by numbers. And so, this gives you a little bit of a picture of the significance of it. And the significance of it is, a lot of it is forest, industry issues, but a lot of it is mining. And so, this is just information. And there's more, I think, that could be looked at if you went to their website because a lot of information is on this website, so. And if there are any extras, if someone in the audience wants some, grab one up here. There's some more too. And then, one other thing, as serving as the N-Club representatives, we've had discussions on border-to-border route. And I know that we had a presentation this morning and as well as another one. So, I met with Patty Thielen, who is our Northeast Regional DNR Manager, as well as the Regional Parks and Trail Director, Mr. Schilling, and asked some questions about the B2B. And, and what I'm expressing is, you know, what's going to happen if we do, do nothing? And I'm not advocating for one thing or the other, but I think it's worthwhile information for us to consider and timely. So, if we take no action, then this will go through the B2P route as it is. And there's a new map that's going through Cook County that's, I think, been, there's, it's still, they're still reviewing some things and some things have to happen with whether or not, what is the extensiveness of environmental review? And so, until that decision's made, this is still, you know, still, there's some work that the DNR needs to do. So, I guess at some point in time, I would suggest we have a, some kind of discussion. It could be a committee of the whole down the line saying, okay, do we want to do anything about this or do we just let it go? And, and we could make a resolution like three counties have, that we don't want it in our county and request to be removed. Or we can just let it go. But what I'm just asking you to consider is whether we should even go that route and discuss it. You know, as far as a possible resolution in the future. So, what I, I think, just to summarize that, at some point, have a discussion on whether or not we should even bring this up at a board meeting. And then, if, whatever that decision's make, then either we let it go or have a board discussion. Would that be feasible or, Molly, as an approach?
You're asking me?
Yes. From legal standpoint?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Bershine, I, I'm, I don't know if I can answer that question. It doesn't seem to me to be a legal question right now. I mean, we don't have in front of us a request for permission to cross the lands. We don't have a request to fund the signage. I believe the boards, you know, part of your objective is to make policy, obviously. If you want to have that discussion, it needs to be in an open meeting, obviously.
Sure.
And, you know, one question I would have is, when is the environmental review expected to be complete? That would seem to me to be relevant information for the board to consider before they make a decision.
Yeah, I think as far as the process, maybe that's the timing, is that the DNR would need to come to the county to seek permission for signage. One caveat that was discussed in my meeting with them, I met with them for about an hour and a half just because I had a lot of questions. And, and I work with Patty Thielen monthly, you know, and more than monthly sometimes on committees I'm on, is, you know, the process and what other counties have done, I think, has been somewhat premature because we really don't know. So, I think at some point in time, from my understanding with the conversation, they would come to the county and ask for permission to signage because there's some county roads involved. And so, maybe that's the timing. And I did ask them if they'd be willing to come to a board meeting, if that would be, you know, at some point in time would be a good thing to do. Then they said they would. Any questions or comments? I'd appreciate them and.
So, one of the border-to-border routes, the current draft affects a lot of my district and I have citizens contacting me. So, I have an email from Kristen Foster from this morning at 8:18 a.m. So, this is the most current update for you. And she is still waiting for Andrew to return to work from the DNR. That is our contact for the border-to-border route. And she had it on the agenda for your public safety and transportation meeting, but he was not available to attend. So, she is still waiting for a response and it will come to you two on that committee that you sit on, which is the process.
Yes.
On top of that, our Parks and Trails Committee did not have a quorum at its last meeting. And had they had a quorum, that committee would have asked this board to pass the resolution that was presented to you previously. So, they didn't have a quorum, they're not bringing that forward. But I want you to know that the Parks and Trails Committee is supportive of this route. So, those are the two processes. So, Kristen is still waiting for Andrew to be back and that will come to your committee, just like the ATV ordinance.
Good. Yes, and I think I was going to suggest that too, that that would be a discussion that would start there.
It was on your agenda this, like in May or something, and it wasn't able to be done. So, those are the two things that are coming up for you.
Any other report?
So, some of you heard on the radio this morning and some of you I have talked to. September 25th at 10:30 a.m. at the Co-op Community Room will be coffee with the Commissioner. I would love to have other Commissioners present. Myron has said he's going to try and get that on his calendar to be there also with me. It's always good to have multiple perspectives. Bobby, I apologize, you missed our board workshop that we were doing together. This is part of what we discussed, to be more in touch with the public and have different opportunities. And then I had the article in the News Herald on Friday that came out about ways to communicate. So, I just want to note that you are all welcome to attend it. You know, I'll talk to Jeff's office about how we noticed that in case there's three of us there. We're not conducting business, but we are having a conversation. So, you're all very welcome to that and we'd like to continue it if any of you would be able to take that up. And obviously, you want to have one in your area. I know you already have a group that has coffee and you joined them. So, that's my update.
Two weeks ago, seemed like it was yesterday, but two weeks ago, I'm on the University of Minnesota Extension Committee. It's a volunteer, so I take care of my own travel and all that. But we normally meet two times a year at our AMC. But this year, they are big promoters of 4H. So, we met down in St. Paul at the campus there and then walked over to the state fair and joined the 6,000 FFAs and 4Hers and all of that there. The topic for the board meeting was opioids in rural Minnesota. So, I gathered that information and brought it to my health planning committee at the clinic on Friday. And so, that was passed around and able to look at it from our public health standpoint and also from the clinic, the two doctors that are also working with opioids in the rural area. So, it's great when you can make those connections and bring it back to the county and see where those suggestions will go with opioids in our situation here. So, any other meetings other than AMC, which we're all going to be going to starting tomorrow in Alexandria?
Yeah, I got a meeting or an email from Kay@ARC that today at St. Louis County's Committee of the Whole, Commissioner Nelson is trying to get a resolution for St. Louis County to withdraw from the joint powers agreement at ARID Regional Corrections. So, that's something they're definitely keeping an eye on.
So, if they withdraw, then the amount they contribute would be spread out amongst the other counties?
Yes.
And what's their annual contribution?
$18 million.
I just wanted everyone to understand the impact of this conversation.
Yeah, we paid $328,000, $330,000 in ARC.
Yeah, I think I'd basically shut it down. I'm sorry, but.
Yeah. Madam Chair, so, is there any background you can provide about the reasoning and the support for that?
Do you know, do you know Commissioner Nelson?
No. He's been having this conversation for years that.
Oh, okay.
This is his first shot at the board yet at those.
Who owns the facility, you know? They actually own it.
So.
Do you have any take on how that's received by the rest of the Commissioners in St. Louis County?
Yeah. Frank doesn't, Commissioner Jewell doesn't figure he has the support for it, but I think it's something that he's going to keep pushing, so.
And the new Commissioner came on board too.
I've, I was in a meeting last week with one of the Commissioners from St. Louis County and we talked about it a little bit. And I think Bobby said it right, that not everyone on the St. Louis Board necessarily agrees with Mr. Nelson. But he does pronounce things publicly and make statements. But I guess, you know, I don't know what'll happen, but I know, I think there's at least four Commissioners that wouldn't even go there, but.
That reminds me, and I, I think I've brought this up before too, is this, our Community Health Board, CHB Director is going to be retiring. And so, that was an opportunity to, to take a look at the CHB's structure and, and so on of the options. That's under consideration is St. Louis County pulling out and being their own community health board. And my understanding is the reasoning behind that is because of some redundancies and just the, the different levels of bureaucracy involved because so much of the CHB is St. Louis County and the use and just the funds are largely that. And so, so there is, I think, five different scenarios that are kind of being looked at. And our local representatives are planning to attend the meeting in person just because of the importance of this decision and conversation. Normally, we do it via video. And there's different configurations and the state has said that they'll, they'll support the counties however, however it shakes out. And I don't know, I get the impression, I don't know that there is a pretty, it feels like that's where things are heading there on that issue at least. We're not talking the same scope of, of expenses there, it's just a way to. But one of the other options too is just to kind of either co-locate or integrate with another organization. And I've kind of reached out and to ask what that could look like, what other organizations, how that could work. So, yeah, it's similar, but different. But there's always changes, we just have to adapt. But if it shuts something down, that's a whole nother, whole nother deal, which plays into, well.
How many people play in the sandbox?
Plays into a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think that ARC yearly budget's about $27 million and St. Louis County picks up 75, 80% of that or better.
It's not a matter of usage? Okay. Any meetings to update other than AMC that I announced coming up?
Well, look there, I mean, the, the registration's now open for the annual conference, AMC Annual Conference and the agenda's out and so.
And if you're intending to go, please coordinate with April so she can get you reservations at the.
I emailed her yesterday.
Same. There's five different hotels that are.
If you want to be in town where the conference is happening, we've got to make reservations soon.
Yeah. Well, I was looking at the map and it was an interesting layout of hotels, so it's.
It's also very interesting how you get back and forth and then you include the blizzard, that usually happens.
Yeah, right.
That's for sure. Anything else? Well, then, we do have September anniversaries.
We do. So, we have Lori Erickson in Public Health and Human Services. We also have Jade Woltman in Public Health and Human Services, both celebrating two years. Kelly Schleep at our Highway Department, five years. Andrea DeBoer in Public Health and Human Services, six years. Lindy, thank you very much, Lindy, for 26 years. Some of you may see her here and there occasionally. She kind of does things behind the scenes for us, but highly important work that she does. Rowan Watkins, seven years, lucky number seven, thank you, Rowan. Melissa Rexroad from the Sheriff's Office, six years. And then we have Mike Smith, also celebrating 26 years in Land Services. And that would be at our recycle center. If you're dropping off your cycle, say a big thank you to him. Pat Eliason, 24 years in the Sheriff's Department, thank you very much. And Richard, I'm going to trash this name, so I'm not even going to say it, but thank you for your first year in maintenance. And I believe he is our backup maintenance at the YMCA. Can you say that last name?
I'd just say Wojcick.
Wojc, okay. So, thank you all so much for what you do.
Right, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Pretty much everything at ARC is based on usage.
Yeah.
Except for, I mean, they probably don't have a schedule, so I worked out, I guess, they use a year varies with the different.